Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is not a board meeting. This is a public hearing. We will make sure that anything that is said or communicated gets given to all board members. We will have some other board members joining us as the meeting goes on as well. This is a New York State mandate. Anytime that there are changes made to the code of conduct, the school district required to have a public hearing. And that's our public hearing. It is scheduled by 6:00 p.m. Each community member that speaks to us, whether online or in person, will have approximately three minutes. It does not mean there are not other opportunities to communicate. There definitely are. You can use the Let's Talk portal. You can email Ms. Talke, Dr. Bryman, myself, any board member individually. And I would like to remind the public as well that we have spent a good deal of time going to various locations, being at schools. We did a student feedback session. We worked with some PPAs with some teachers and some of our unions. And so this has been the continuation of a significant attempt to receive as much feedback as possible. Just so folks understand what happens from here, we'll take all the feedback. We'll make any changes or edits. We'll send it to the policy committee of the school district and then put it in front of the entire Board of Education. We're hoping sometime in January or the latest in February. So that's where we're at today. So glad that we have such a great turnout. I will go down the list that we have here and then at the end ask if folks would also like to add their name. And our reminder again, three minutes. I will politely try to remind folks of their three minutes as much as possible, but we're looking forward to the feedback. We all sat here, board colleagues. Fantastic. I'm going to read the names as I see them. As someone who teaches in a classroom, I know that I mispronounce people's names on a regular basis. Please do not take offense and please do correct me so we have the correct pronunciation of your name on record as well. So up first, we have Trudy Bodem Reed. Is that correct? Feel free to stand there or come to the front as well, whatever makes you the most comfortable.
I'm a senior at IHS. I've been in this district for the vast majority of my educational career. And I personally really like this new code of conduct. I think it's important that we move towards a more equitable and just Ithaca City School District. I also really appreciate that it's from day through 12, so we can start these changes early. I do think that the, this code of conduct is necessary in beginning that change in culture and making our culture of love even stronger. I do have not concern, but just want to make sure that as we get past and enacted that we keep students and teachers and just the whole ICSD community at the forefront and that we make sure that we just remember that everybody, you know, that the goal is equity. And that with this goal of equity, we make sure to be sensitive around language and the policies that go into the way that this code is enacted.
Thank you very much, Trudy. Up next, we have Dr. Anne Burns Thomas.
Hello. So as Dr. Bradwell says, my name is Anne Burns Thomas and I have served as the Code of Conduct Advisory Council co-chair for the past three years. For those who might not know me, I'm an educator first and foremost. I'm a professor of education at SUNY Cortlandt and proud to be preparing the next generation of teachers. I was a middle school teacher in the School District of Philadelphia for close to a decade. And I also want to make it clear that I'm a parent of two students who go to Ithaca High School. I say all of this to be really clear about who I am and how I participated in the Code of Conduct Advisory Council, but also hopefully to remind everyone listening of the people behind the work. When it comes to my kids, I have strong feelings. I'm sure that's true for a lot of us here today who know kids. We have strong feelings about them. We want the best for them. We want them to be safe. And I strongly believe that this code of conduct reinforces safe schools and is a flexible K to 12 document with enough room for teachers and administrators and other education professionals to exercise their judgment on behalf of and in support of children. I also came to address a concern that I've heard about the Advisory Council and that is that there were not adequate representatives who were teachers or other education professionals. This is in some ways a valid critique. Teachers should be a part of this process. The members of the council attempted to invite participation of teachers at every turn. But given the demands and constraints on their time, it simply was not possible for educators to participate at the level that they might have expected in 2019 when this council began. Once the pandemic happened and most of our work went online, many teachers who had been working closely with the committee couldn't attend meetings anymore. And we absolutely understood this. I hope that we can all remember the demands on teachers' time during that bleak period of shutdown. We were asking so much of teachers and to add one more thing in terms of participating in the Code of Conduct Advisory Council was just too much. The small group of members who had the capacity to continue did so, but we never stopped trying to recruit teachers to the work. Whenever we heard from teachers who had a suggestion or an idea, we asked them to attend our meetings. Many teachers told me personally that they could not take on one more thing or join one more committee. And again, this made total sense. So then we doubled down and asked for feedback during contract hours and at school locations. And that feedback has become a part of the draft that you see today. Teachers should be involved, but please be clear that the council knows that and have worked really hard to adapt feedback from teachers at every turn. This code of conduct asks us all to remember that ICSD students are children and that supporting teachers and students to keep those children close, even when it's difficult, is worth our time and effort. I'm proud of this code of conduct. It now reflects the work that so many ICSD teachers and other education professionals were already doing and we're supporting them by having policies in place. I hope that this draft is adopted by the school board and that those who have questions or concerns continue to do their own research and propose changes for future iterations and maybe even create handbooks at their own schools. It's been a real gift to me. It's been a lot of work since 2019, but it's been a real gift to me to get to know so many of the committed school board members and teachers and students and other administrators. And I just feel like, you know, it's been a real uphill climb, but here we are with a draft to be voted on. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. And thank you for your service and serving as the co-chair. And one thing to reiterate that this is a draft, a living document, but we're here to gather feedback. Up next is Merrill Fitz.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so sorry that I'm joining you virtually and not in person. I'm at home with COVID and so my brain is at about 50%, so apologies in advance if I trip over my words. I'm the executive director of Village at Ithaca and the parent of 11 children who have attended or currently attend ICSD schools. I am also a member of the Code of Conduct Advisory Council, which I joined in fall 2019 after attending a public hearing exactly like this one. At that hearing, I was the only member of the public present and I had questions. Prior to my time at the village, I spent about a decade working in our juvenile justice and child welfare system as an attorney for children. I've also spent the past 15 years as a foster parent in Tompkins County. I have spent basically my entire adult life bearing witness to the school-to-prison pipeline here in our community, including as the parent of an incarcerated child. When I spoke at the hearing three years ago, I asked questions about disparate outcomes for marginalized kids. I wanted to know how a school district with a culture of love could continue to follow national trends of disproportionate disciplinary outcomes for students of color, low-income students and students with disabilities. The answer was that ICSD was trying to do better and to please come and join them. So over the past three years, I attended countless committee meetings, work sessions, public forums and retreats. I read articles and books that support the work, attended trainings and learned from experts like Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell and Dr. Anne Burns Thomas, whose professional wisdom has been a gift I will always cherish. Today, I am here in support of the revised draft of the ICSD Code of Conduct. I do not think it is perfect. In fact, for me, it does not go far enough, but I am resigned that we have to start somewhere and that this is the place to do it. I understand the culture of fear that many parents are immersed in right now. Raising a child in this day and age is terrifying and it seems as though there's danger around every corner. For me, however, the previous code of conduct and ones like it are among the weapons I fear most in my children's lives. A systems of policies designed and enforced to exclude my children from the educational system and force them into the carceral one. In my family, that is the dangerous weapon and that is the threat to their daily safety, more so than anything else. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight and to be a part of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrill. Thank you for your work as well.
Thank you, Merrill. Feel better.
Up next is Barry Dershowitz.
Hey, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a retired educator. I started as a daycare teacher working with toddlers, 18 months, three years old, back at West Hill Daycare Center. I was a teacher out in Dryden for many years, grades four, five, six. I taught here in Ithaca at LACS and PJM at a Boynton Middle School. I was the instructional specialist for equity here at Ithaca for four years, so did professional development. I was also a principal at Newfield High School and I was assistant superintendent at TST Boys. When I did that job, one of the many opportunities I had was to serve on a task force for civic readiness at the state level. So that gives you just a little bit. I'm also a parent of three graduates from Ithaca and now a grandparent of a young person who's just starting in daycare. So that gives you a little background in terms of my experience in dealing with discipline from all different kinds of perspectives. And I wanted to share a couple of assumptions I bring to this and then a little bit of my analysis evaluation, having looked at the code of conduct. So some assumption I bring are that school is a social environment, just like our families, just like our communities, whether we're talking locally or globally. And conflict is a very natural and inevitable phenomenon when we're in a social environment. Schools can be a place where we all, and that when I say all, I'm talking about students, staff, families and community, where we all learn to recognize conflict. In other words, know that there's conflict happening and where we can work through that conflict together in ways that are safe and healthy and effective. Another assumption I bring is that discipline, and you can think about, I think about discipline like the cello player who has to practice many hours in order to get better and better, or the marathon runner who has to be committed and get up early in the day no matter what because they know they've got to put their training in. So to me, discipline is a collective curriculum. That is, we work on it together. What are the facts? What are the concepts? What are the skills that we need to know and that we need to be able to do together in order to create and maintain a safe, healthy and effective learning environment? How will we know when we're learning these things? So my analysis tells me that traditional codes of conduct aim to stop conflict from happening. They state rights and responsibilities and they state consequences, which they had to call consequences for what they call effective. And its fear of consequences is intended to motivate compliance with a very unrealistic belief that total compliance will somehow eliminate all conflict. I don't think that's natural in a social environment. When I read through the ICSD Code of Conduct, I found it to be an exciting and innovative approach to address in conflicts in schools because it articulates essential facts, essential concepts and essential skills that all of us who together make up the school community need to know and be able to do if we're really going to recognize moments of conflict and work through these in ways that protect and nurture the fundamental dignity of all the members of the school community. Now, there's lots of multiple intersecting and mutually reinforcing examples in this document that I could share to really make what I just said concrete. And I'd be happy to do that in some other venue if that worked in any way helpful or not. But most of all, I just wanted you to know that I think that this is transformative if, in fact, people together buy into it, we learn it together and we do it together in an ongoing cycle. So thank you for your time.
Given all the job, now you're retired. Up next, we have Dr. Roberta Wallin. We cannot hear you, Dr. Wallin.
Okay, I'm here. So first of all, I want to thank the policy committee and all those who worked on the new code of conduct for all your hard work. You have produced a document that we in Ithaca can be proud of that recognizes the flawed humanity of children and adults and seeks to repair rather than to punish. I know from over 25 years of teaching as well as parenting three children of my own that when a child misbehaves, in quotes, there's usually a reason for it. If I can take the time to find out the reason, we can usually solve the problem. However, if that behavior pushed my buttons so that I am unable to respond rationally, I am more likely to want to punish the child or get them out of my sight because I am human too. Punishing children rarely solves anything. Providing a framework for restorative justice will offer educators a road to supporting children who are most in need. And isn't that why we became teachers? I remember when my daughter came home from school crying about being harassed by a group of girls. My first instinct was to want retribution for the pain my daughter experienced. I wish there had been something in place to repair the wound rather than punishing those girls. I am delighted that such a mechanism exists now for all our children. I have been reading a book called Justice on Both Sides by Dr. Maisha Nguyen. This book is being used as an anchor text for the work on restorative justice that the district is engaging in. It directly speaks to the issues raised in the code of conduct. I would recommend it to anyone who wants to better understand why we need a code of conduct like the one being put forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallin. Up next, I believe we have Elizabeth Burman, who has signed up to speak as well. Dr. Burman.
Hi. I don't have a formal set of statements to make, just sort of thoughts as I, as I read through the document. First, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to engage with the document and offer some feedback and many thanks to the people who have obviously done a lot of important work to get the document to this point. There's a lot to be celebrated here and overall, I really appreciate the emphasis on creating and maintaining a culture of love and that the acknowledgement of the ongoing cycle of reflection and discussion and policy realignment that that requires. As a professionally, as a gerontologist, I recognize that most people don't think about aging-related issues until it directly affects their families or their loved ones. And as a parent, I often don't think about child development-related issues until they become relevant in the lives of my children or other children that I love. And so, you know, I offer these thoughts from that position as a parent who is kind of newly dialing into these discussions and, but also as a conservative citizen who is thinking more broadly than just the, in the interest of my own children. Just a few thoughts as I read this document, I recognize that I'm coming to it kind of late in the game. Overall, I, one thing that I, that I noted as I was reading through it is that it opens by saying that one goal of the code of conduct is to reject suspension or expulsion except when required by law. And then in every instance that I saw throughout the document beyond that opening, it states that the goal of the code of conduct is to reject suspension or expulsion, which, which is certainly something that I, I agree with philosophically that we should make efforts to, to minimize that and reject that as the first go-to measure. But I think that there are many goals of this document and that is only one of them. I also, in reading through it, questions that came to my mind were, how is this document explicitly linked to other sets of guidance or procedures for administrators, teachers, bus drivers, aides, others? If I am one of those individuals or a parent volunteer and I am in a position where it seems as though the code of conduct has been violated, is it clearly stated and am I sufficiently trained to know what to do, in what circumstances, et cetera? Additionally, in Appendix 1, the third paragraph states that all codes of conduct in New York State must have a section that outlines prohibited conduct. I wasn't totally clear on my, my reading of the document where that list was contained. Perhaps that list was the, in Section A in that appendix, the list under violent pupils. Perhaps it was in Section B, the list under disruptive pupils, also on the same page. I wasn't clear that that was what the district was endorsing as prohibited conduct. So just looking for some clarity around that in terms of the wording. Additionally, also in that Appendix 1, it states 8.CRR New York 120.5 requires school districts to prohibit and report on the following offenses. But it didn't say by whom that report was to be made and to whom. Was that a report to the district office? Is that a report to law enforcement? What, what, what does that report entail? Additionally, in Appendix 2, the only place that I saw reference to transportation or school buses was in Appendix 2, which was specific to suspension and expulsion, which it seems to me that there are issues related to the code of conduct that go well beyond suspension or expulsion as they relate to school buses and transportation. But that was the only place that I saw it addressed. In that appendix, it says when a student does engage in dangerous or disruptive behavior, the bus driver is expected to bring such conduct to the principal's attention. I wasn't, I like, I wondered how that happened, right? Particularly in a situation where the danger or disruptive behavior is a violent threat. Does the school bus driver have a cell phone such that they can contact a building principal or is there some pass-through that that is supposed to happen? And if I am that bus driver, am I clear on how I am to make that report and that it's to go to a principal? A question that came for me, it seems like perhaps there could be some more clarity throughout the document around the bus environment and how the code applies to the context, context of the bus environment. Additionally, I wonder, and, and, and I am not an expert in this and I do not endorse a particular way forward, but, but in the world in which we live and granted out of some measure of fear for my children and for the children, of all children in the district, are there some behaviors that necessitate some law enforcement involvement? Not because I think that a child should be prosecuted, but because I think that there, that to the extent that school officials are not able to assess the credibility of a threat in its entirety, particularly around the home environment and whether or not access to weapons that are threatened to be used are, are actually make a threat credible. I think that it's important for it to, there to be situations in which we rely on someone outside of our school environment to assess the credibility of a threat. And because I think that a full assessment of, of the situation, particularly a violent threat that is made or a threat of violence, a full assessment impacts the level of mental health and other supports that are necessary in a situation and how our interventions are approached and carried out. I looked to the District White's School Safety Plan for some additional guidance or clarity around these issues and felt that the section on page 25 entitled, When Should We Call Law Enforcement? Didn't answer the questions that I had related to that. I, I wonder, again, I don't, I don't know. I'm not the expert. But I wonder if there are certain conducts, certain behaviors or decisions in a school environment where it is important for, not for punitive reasons, but for the safety of all children in our school to involve the help of other professionals in our community to be able to determine whether a threat is credible, specifically in situations where a threat is made. And the, the time and the target and the, the weapon, et cetera, is detailed in that threat. Thank you very much.
That are all, that's all the folks that we have here. I remind folks that our job is to collect as much information as possible. This will then go to a policy committee meeting. I have the impression that you all here seem to love meetings. So come join us at the policy committee meeting where you have a opportunity to actually engage in some discussion, provide some answers. But before the hearing is, is over, are there other folks who would wish to speak as part of our public hearing this evening? I've talked two years on Zoom. Awkward silence does not bother me at all. Please.
I don't think it's the biggest issue at hand here. It was a question that was asked by the policy for, and I was just wondering if everyone knew about it or some people. In 23, I believe, of the code of conduct, it says that you can't have weapons, but then it says except if your blade is less than two and a half inches. So you can't have a pocket knife. Right? So I was just wondering if you can, because it's the way it read this is weapon means the same as the term dangerous weapon under the law, which includes a weapon, device, instrument, material or substance or inanimate that is used for or is readily capable of causing death or seriously bodily injury, except a pocket knife with a blade of less than two and a half inches of length. And I understand that if something were to happen and a pocket knife was involved, I'm sure charges or whatever the protocol would happen. But if you just have a pocket knife on your person, can that be taken away? Is that a reason? Is it not allowed or is it only not allowed if it's used to hurt someone? So I was just wondering, yeah, there's nothing on that.
Thank you for raising that again. Again, it's the role of the district of the board to gather as much information to try to tweak the document. Definitely to continue to take in the feedback and change the document. I would ask folks to take a look at the final draft, which will be available at, for a policy committee meeting. And then we will be moving to put it in front of the board. If I'm looking online, I see that Liz Quadrazi has asked to speak as well. So please feel free. Let's, let's bring in Liz.
And I know I missed Liz. Hi, thank you, Dr. Bradwell Quadrozzi. It's Italian. Row. You can do it. It's, I'm just kidding. I want to just briefly acknowledge the work that Merrill and Anne and Dr. Bradwell have done on this. I actually was on the original committee before COVID turns our lives upside down. And I really appreciate the knowledge and what those three folks bring to the table. And Trinity, you don't know this, but I've watched you from afar. It's been amazing to watch you grow up. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Dewitt Middle School, so I see these kids when they're little. Or little-ish, I guess we should say. Worked in the district for ten years. Some of the things I'm going to say, I've said it, I've said before, but look, there's new people in the room, so they probably didn't hear me before. What I would like to say is the concern that I have is who is going to implement the restorative justice? In ten years, I've never seen it implemented. And unfortunately, in my experience, without dedicated people, I just know that people get pulled to put out fires, and they are not available to do what we, what we hope that they will do. I also think that we sometimes lose track of the victims because we're not doing restorative justice. Just this week, I heard someone who was trying to calm a student down for a situation that happened that essentially said, you know, you just got to let it go because people who are hurt, hurt other people. Well, sure, but we're hurt, right? We got to work through the fact that we are hurt by someone else and just brushing it under the rug and say, well, they have more hurt than you, so you need to not worry so much about it, which is, is happening today. That's not okay. We also, I'm speaking on a turn, I apologize to everyone who's going to watch this later. We have a kid who's afraid to come back to school right now because of a situation with another student. Um, I also want to touch on something Roberta said, that when a kid is disruptive, it's because they're not getting what they need. I believe that a hundred and fifty percent, a hundred and ninety percent. When you place a student who reads at a first-grade level in a sixth-grade class, and you say, well, we got a co-teacher who will differentiate obstruction for all these different learners, unfortunately, we're not giving anybody what they need. We're, we're pretending to. I teach about atoms. I teach about chemistry, molecules, bonding. There's not really a way to differentiate that to the first-grade level. We are putting students in classes and they are frustrated because they don't understand what's going on. That's what we're doing, and we're not providing enough support. A co-teacher in a classroom cannot overcome four-grade levels of being behind. And I just wanted to address that because Roberta brought it up. We all understand that, but in a class of twenty-five, I'm sorry, I had the flu in this, whatever. In a class of twenty-five, it's impossible for one or two teachers to overcome it. So if we're really going to do this Code of Conduct, if we're really going to do restorative justice, we have got to put the personnel there. We have got to work with kids where they are and prioritize getting them reading at grade level. I honestly believe with my heart, getting passionate, I'm sorry, this is who I am, that eighty percent of our problems would be solved if we would teach our kids to read. Um, thank you for all the work you've done. I was the teacher who said I can't take on one more thing. It was me.
That was real, to take on all of during that time period. So thank everybody who has offered feedback. Again, there are multiple opportunities to continue to offer feedback, the Let's Talk Portal, reaching out to any board member directly, reaching out to Lilith Talkit or Dan Ryman, who have been also extremely instrumental in drafting language, doing research, making connections. The book that Dr. Wallin has mentioned, Justice on Both Sides by Maisha Nguyen. Our ICSD central office has done a great job of contacting both Maisha Nguyen and their spouse to come do some trainings for the school district. One of the major questions, as someone who's also taught in this district for seven years, who currently trains pre-service teachers to enter into the field, there's a great deal of thought about how we're going to approach this. We recognize that simply passing a code of conduct does not change practice or behaviors. I'm going to borrow an idea that I've heard Ms. Talkit say that I think is great, that next year will be year zero, right, that we have to start from the ground up and build a framework and an infrastructure to support this. That means as a school board and as a school district, identifying what those resources are and putting them in place. It means as a school board, having a budget that reflects the values that we know needs to take place in order for this to be there. I'm looking at Mary Grover in terms of the professional development that we already started doing and will continue to do significantly as we move more in this direction. For us, for the folks who've been involved at this point in time, the goal was to begin to shift the culture away from one of punishment and punitive approaches. But there's also a great deal of work to do, and obviously, as we've heard this evening, a number of questions. We consider this to be a living document, right? The board is supposed to review the Code of Conduct every year. The last time we did that was 2019, and in a real substantive way. And we anticipate doing it on a yearly basis to take additional feedback, to hear more from our educators, to hear more from our students who are amazing. When we just saw you all on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and to continue to create a document that meets the needs of this community. And that's where I think we'll, we'll head. As Mr. Dershowitz said, it will be with conflict. It will be with disagreement, and that is perfectly fine and to be expected. How we engage that disagreement and how we engage and how we resolve that conflict, hopefully, we can model as a way which to move forward as we do this work. So with that being said, I encourage folks again to continue reaching out to us. A number of the questions we have written down, also questions we've heard before. I hope many of these questions are answered in a draft, and if they're not, keep asking the questions. It may take year two before we get this to be completely aligned with all of our policies, with our safety plan, with the Code of Conduct. Twelve different schools, we can keep going down the line of how we make this work happen. But to, I think Merrill's point, the last time we had a Code of Conduct public hearing, there was a single person in the audience. To look out and see people's interest, sharing, reading, giving feedback is heartwarming because we know that that means to a community that's committed to trying to create a document that serves all of our, our young folks. So to the students in the front row, good to see you again. Thank you for all your wisdom that I share, and don't ever give you credit for us. I want to give you credit in public. Greatly appreciate it. And if there are no other comments, we will close our public hearing until six o'clock when we begin our regular voting meeting, school board meeting. So thank you all for showing up. We'll see everybody back at six P M. Thank you.